Okay, so before we get into the meetings, I am going to just spend a couple of minutes to set the stage, if you will. So the redesign of the SMA's regional governance approach was an effort that started probably two to three years ago, and it very much was inspired by the changes that were afoot at the Saskatchewan Health Authority and the reflection and need to think about how do we modify our regional governance model at the Saskatchewan Medical Association? So that, again, it aligns and it works in the health system context that we're working in. So that work started a couple of years ago and had extensive consultation and engagement with Medical Staff Association leadership. At the time, they were RMA leaders. We surveyed them, we met with them, and we provided regular updates to the Representative Assembly on that work. In the spring of 2021, the Representative Assembly passed four resolutions that basically guided or directed us at the SMA to then begin implementing those changes around the regional governance model. And that kickstarted the commencement of proposed bylaw amendments as they related to the regional medical associations converting to the medical staff associations, what we call the Chapter Seven bylaws within our SMA bylaws. The second piece was the SMA governance review. And this came about in the spring, at the Spring RA, where a resolution was brought to the RA for the organization to consider an external governance review that would look at the structure and processes, and one that would look at, you know, contemporizing our governance processes with a particular focus on, again, transparency, nomination, and election processes. And there was considerable deliberation to that resolution, which was referred to the Board of Directors from May 2021 up until the Fall RA in November. At the Fall RA in November, a presentation was made that provide a snapshot of, you know, the SMA's governance structure and high-level processes, as well as a cross-country scan of medical association governance, basically to bring greater awareness of what we are currently working with. At that time, the RA then presented another resolution that was passed, which was to create a special committee on SMA governance. That committee was elected by and from the Representative Assembly. And Dr. Scharfstein, who is a consultant, will get into more of that. So both the work that we were doing on bylaws, the work that was unfolding with the SMA governance review, was brought then to our AGM last month, as well as our Spring Representative Assembly. And as most, if not all, of you on the call may be aware, we did not conclude those discussions. There was a very full, robust discussion at our AGM, and we were not able to, again, conclude that discussion, nor be able to receive the report from the Special Committee on Governance. So this is really what has brought us together. There were a couple of motions at the AGM that called for a continuation of the discussion that was presented at the AGM, as well as a convening of, pardon me, not a convening, but the consideration of that special committee report that was supposed to be tabled at the Spring RA to be presented at a later date, but ideally to coincide with a special meeting of the general membership. So this is why we're doing this. It was asked of us to bring these topics together. And without question, bylaws and governance are intertwined. So the focus of these sessions is really information sharing and focusing on the go-forward plan. What is our plan as we think about the bylaw amendments and the governance considerations of the Special Committee on SMA Governance? So this is why we're hosting it. We also felt a meeting in an evening on June. We didn't know it was going to be the first night of the Stanley Cup playoffs, I'm sorry to say. But regardless, we felt that a meeting that would be facilitated was really helpful for us to start a series of important conversations with members. So, and we felt that June was important because anything after June was not going to happen until September. And we wanted to keep the conversation fresh, if you will. So that was the reason for a June meeting in terms of these discussions. Now, the board was thoughtful about this session being facilitated, and we thought, who better to go to than Dr. Visvanathan, who is the speaker of the Representative Assembly, given his knowledge and his experience and his effectiveness with facilitating meetings? Now, this importantly would avail the opportunity for our president, as well as our board, to be active participants in the discussion. Because anybody knows who chairs a meeting, chairing and participating in a session can be difficult. So we wanted to honor and respect the opportunity for the president, and by extension, the board, to be active participants. So that is the why behind, or pardon me, the why and the how behind this meeting. The meetings are conjoined, if you will, because of the intertwining of bylaw amendment discussions and governance discussions in general. And the reason we wanted to have this meeting facilitated by Dr. Visvanathan was, again, because of his familiarity, his experience, his knowledge of, you know, effective meeting rules and oversight, and really to ensure that everyone who wants to contribute to this conversation will be able to have the opportunity to engage in the discussion. So that is the, hopefully, quick snapshot in terms of setting the stage for tonight. So before we go any further, I guess, with that very quick overview, the question that I'm going to pose to folks on this call, if I can pop it up, let's see if I can get it. Okay, my animation isn't working. Let's go like this. Oops, I don't want that yet, folks. Is, I had a piece on my slide, there we go. Are there any concerns with the approach for tonight's meetings? So I'd like to hear from you. Are there any concerns with the why we are doing what we're doing? This, these two meetings that are conjoined or coinciding? And how we are doing it in terms of having the support of Dr. Visvanathan facilitate the meetings? Any concerns with what we are proposing tonight? So I'm going to look to my SMA team to let me know if there are any questions in the, or hands up in the, in the participants. Okay, so according to my screen, I do believe I see Dr. Geller. Dr. Geller, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I'm just wondering if you could clarify the powers.
I think Dr. Geller is unmuted, but I can't seem to hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, so bear with us, Dr. Geller. So I'm looking to my technical team, and we're just finding out why we can't hear Dr. Geller. Okay, so. So people are saying that they're hearing Dr. Geller. Unfortunately, the room that I am in, I am not able to hear him. So. Again, just bear with us, I appreciate your patience. And again, I apologize, folks, for this technical difficulty. We thought everything was working when we did a bit of a trial run this afternoon, but sometimes you can't predict everything that's going to happen. So again, thanks for your patience.
Brian, it's Keisha. I just want to test the audio in our studio. Can you hear me, Brian?
Yeah, I can hear you very well.
Okay, and I can hear you fine. Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna duck. Tape an approach. So what we're going to try is I'm going to ask one of my colleagues' computers to be on, microphone to be on, and we'll hear it that way. Okay, so Dr. Scharfstein, you are right beside me. Dr. Jevry, can you please turn off your mute, or turn your mute on? My mute is going to go on. Dr. Scharfstein, unmute yourself, and Dr. Geller, please try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, and sorry for the trouble you're having. I guess I just would like you to ask if you could clarify the powers of this meeting.
Okay, well, maybe I will look for a little bit more information about the powers of the meeting. Can you explain that a little bit further? Again, Dr. Visvanathan is strictly to facilitate, looking at the chat to see who's in the chat that's put up, not the chat, the participant list, to put up their hand, to acknowledge that they put up their hand, and then to ask who may want to respond from that. So that, it's a Q and A, and again, with the principle of trying to facilitate as many voices as possible joining the conversation. So that's, I hope I've answered your question sufficiently, but if not, please try a little bit more with what you mean by powers.
Well, no, no, thank you for that. And that's not, that's not a gap you want to make. I mean, I guess, I mean, the function you just described for Dr. Visvanathan is different than I imagine the function of a chair. However, what I meant was, like, so is this an AGM? Does this meeting have the power to create motions and pass resolutions that have an effect? Or, you know, can this group vote on bylaw amendments and have those go into effect? Like, you know, if, if, if there is the power to draft a motion and pass a resolution, what does that obligate SMA to do with it? Or is this merely an information session where the expectation is people will receive information from the board, from the Special Committee on Governance, and from any other source that the SMA feels is appropriate?
So. I will try and answer from the knowledge I have of the current bylaws, Brian. I, my sense would be, first, this isn't an AGM. It is a special meeting of the membership. So it wouldn't have the significant power an AGM has is to approve or modify bylaw amendments. It would not have that power. It does have the ability and the option to pass resolutions. And as with an AGM, a resolution passed by a meeting, either AGM or general membership, is a recommendation which can be made to the board or the RA, not binding, but obviously would carry some weight. So my sense is it would not be inappropriate to have resolutions or motions posed and voted and passed, and those would be directed either to the board or to the RA. But not being an AGM, it would not have the authority to actually pass bylaw amendments, which is really the only significant power, so to speak, that an AGM has uniquely.
I'm going to ask Dr. Geller, is there anything further?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me now, but I keep getting messages that the host won't allow me to unmute. So, but no, I mean, yeah, that does clarify, so. Thanks. And so that does, however, bring into question the role of Dr. Visvanathan, that if he's merely monitoring the chat, or if he's actually the chair, which would be a departure from what one would expect from the bylaws. But that, that would be perhaps a reasonable departure.
Again, as I've said before, the primary focus with Dr. Visvanathan and the special meeting of the, of the general membership is to facilitate, it is to navigate the participant dialogue in the Q and A. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or concerns? I don't believe I'm seeing any hands up. So again, thank you for that. And I'm going to then, again, the wording on this is to call to order, but let's start the meeting and allow Dr. Visvanathan to, again, introduce our speaker very briefly, and then pass it to our presenter. Hey, Dr. Visvanathan?
Thank you. And Bonnie, let me just double-check audio. You can hear me okay, Bonnie? I saw your hands go up in perplexness. I think Brian Geller could hear me. Yeah, okay. So everyone can hear me except Bonnie, so we're going to go ahead. Good evening, everyone. I'm Keisha Visvanathan. I work as a urologist in Saskatoon, and I'm really pleased to serve as facilitator for this evening's two meetings, discussing governance review. And we'll have a question-answer session discussion at the end of the presentation. And most importantly, let's get on with the presentation. Let me introduce someone who all of you know. Dr. Brian Scharfstein has been consulting with the SMA about governance review. He's made presentations at the last few RAs and is here with us this evening to give more details and answer our questions. Dr. Scharfstein, please go ahead.
Thank you, Keisha, and hopefully everyone can hear me and interrupt if you can't. And thank you for the introduction to, as you've alluded, someone who maybe didn't need an introduction, fortunately. And the other piece of good news was we're almost on time, so that will hopefully bode well. I want to start, though, by answering a question you might have is, why is he presenting? I am presenting not what I think, nor what I necessarily would suggest. I am presenting a distillation, what would be the consensus, suggestions, recommendations, first, for this first session of the Board of Directors, and then subsequently, the Special Committee. And I've had the good fortune, and I mean that, to work with both in terms of this overall review of governance. So they have asked if I would attempt, and you'll be the judge of that, to succinctly put into a slide presentation for you where we've been and where we're going, and help, with help, Keisha, to guide the discussion. But again, I want to emphasize, these are the recommendations and suggestions, and the substance of the discussion is reflected in what the Board of Directors thinks. And of course, many, if not most, if not all of them are on the line, including John here with us, to be able to answer any questions. So what are we going to do? We've already done the first bullet, which is why are we here? Bonnie, I think, has kind of summarized how we got to this point, and as well, gave you a brief snapshot of the AGM that we just finished. And so the major chunk of work, which we'd like to get done in the next half hour or so, is to think about where to next, to actually find a solution to introduce bylaw amendments that will make the association stronger, more effective, more efficient. And I'll come to a couple of things on that. What is governance? Bottom line, it's how the, it's how the association does its business and how it manages its affairs. It is incredibly important and incredibly boring, but I think it is worth the time that you're going to spend trying to do it. And I would observe, if you get it right, the organization will operate smoothly with a lot of support from its members for a very long time. If we don't get it right, there will be potentially significant problems, worth the investment. In terms of the governance review process, the, Bonnie has already identified, three different things came together over the last two or three years. The reorganization of the regional medical associations to medical staff associations, which resulted in the need for, first of all, in-depth, deep discussions with the old regional medical associations, including the Presidents and Presidents Forum, the Fall Tour, and therefore, a new set of organizations, the medical staff associations, which required some bylaw changes. In addition, at that same time, the thought was, while we're doing that, the board said, there's some cleaning up we could do. Let's not get into anything significant and potentially controversial because we have a special committee looking into governance, RA direction. But we could tighten up the bylaws and put them into alignment with current practice. That was the full package that was presented to the Fall RA, which didn't get fully discussed. In addition, the Special Committee is working at the request of the RA, and what it's considering overlaps significantly with what the, what is being considered by the Board of Directors. So the thought was, first of all, at the last meeting of the RA and AGM, put those sessions together because they overlap a lot in terms of what they're covering, and subsequently, tonight as well. In terms of the resolutions, the outcome of those resolutions will be the substance of what we'll chat about and what I'll try to cover in the next session with the RA. I would encourage everyone on this call that is a member, not a delegate to the RA, to stay on the line. Your input is invaluable. And the fact that you're willing to join this meeting on an evening in June, I think emphasizes how valuable that would be. So please stay. In terms of the governance review process, as referenced, a lot has gone on over the last two years, which I won't repeat. And similarly, the bylaw amendment process, then, it was essentially a two-stage approach. One is the AGM process, and the second would have been the Special Committee's bylaw amendments, which would be coming a year from now. So, as referenced, the board did present to the AGM in May, on May 6th, a suite of bylaw amendments. Next slide, Bonnie, and you have been given a full, detailed package. I'm not going to assume that you've read every word or necessarily in detail or understood it, hence the need for dialogue and discussion. I would suggest, though, that since this particular meeting, as I think Dr. Geller's question noted, doesn't have the authority to approve specific bylaw amendments, our time would just be spent saying, well, then what should we do? What would be the work plan to achieve appropriate bylaw amendments that are well-understood by the membership, well-discussed, and presented in a format that affords proper dialogue and discussion? And that's what we're going to do. So I'm not going to go through any of the proposals that were made. They're in your package that went to the, before the AGM, and as well, that you could link to for this meeting. I'll only note that there are really three categories. There are all those changes in Chapter Seven, which are about medical staff associations, and there will be additional ones from the Special Committee's work, which we'll come to. There were some content changes, though, either to add clarity. I would say those are pretty non-controversial, but also for alignment. And some of those had significant implications, and observations have been made at the meeting, as well as subsequently. For example, the Policy and Legislative Committee, does it exist? Should it exist? What should it do? So there are a number of significant content issues as well that were not debated or discussed at the AGM. And finally, there were lots of editorial housekeeping changes, non-controversial. Next slide, synopsis, quite simple, we didn't get it done. We did get some discussion of Chapter Seven. A proposal was made to refer several of those amendments to the Special Committee on Governance. That was debated at length. It was passed by one vote, so it was a very close vote in terms of what should we do with those. And subsequently, the Chapter Seven amendments were passed. None of the others were discussed or passed. And eventually, a motion was made to adjourn, basically, the meeting and call a special meeting to continue the discussion, which is this meeting. So where does that leave us? Some bylaw amendments were passed, most weren't. There was no Legend Policy Committee in place in the preceding year, and there was a resolution that was not debated that would have given the board the authority to assume the powers of the Legend Policy Committee in its absence, but that was not discussed. So even accepting that the ones that were passed are enforceable is somewhat problematic. Needless to say, it's a bit of a mess. The suggestion was made, and it seemed to be fairly significant support amongst members at the AGM, that the Special Committee would be an appropriate place for consideration of these bylaw amendments. And of course, at the RA, unfortunately, time also did not allow for the Special Committee to present its deliberations, and that will come following this meeting. So what next? What I will attempt to outline for you is the deliberations of the senior staff and the board in terms of how can we get to the desired goal, which is a set of bylaw amendments that the profession is proud of, feels that they have had adequate opportunity to have input, and that we are comfortable will make the association more effective and more efficient. To do that, the first suggestion is, let's just take a pause, and in sense, start again somewhat afresh, but not lose all the work that's been done for the last two or three years. So we would keep the same event, the current bylaws, for another year. We've lived with them for several years now, when they're not completely in step. Another year, we don't sense that that would be problematic. Continue, continue, consider expanding the mandate of the Special Committee of the RA to ask it to also include consideration of all of the board-proposed bylaw amendments. And to spend the next year consulting with and considering their original work, plus this new set of work, which would be those board-proposed bylaw amendments. This would require extending the term of that committee, which the RA would be asked to do for another year, with the expectation that the Special Committee on Governance would bring to an AGM in the spring of 2023 a full slate of bylaw amendments for consideration. In addition, the board would be asked to appoint a Legend Policy Committee because the current bylaws require that, and we should try to stay in step with those bylaws. It would, it could be an interim, and it would be for now, pending the outcome of the deliberations of the Special Committee as to what should be the final disposition of the Legend Policy Committee. Should it continue? Should it be an RE-elected committee? Should it be a board-appointed committee? Could the board assume its responsibilities? Those would be all questions for the Special Committee first to deliberate, then to have discussions with the board, with the RA, on the Fall Tour, et cetera. So if you, if, if that was an acceptable next steps forward process, and we're going to ask shortly for your commentary on that, the from now to May of 2023 would look sort of like this. The next six months, the Special Committee would continue its work and assume some new responsibilities, including those board bylaw amendments. Particularly in the fall, there would be significant, hopefully, member engagement and feedback through MSA meetings, Presidents Forum, the Fall Tour. through MSA meetings, President's Forum, the Fall Tour, surveys of the members, President's Letters, e-news, et cetera. This would culminate then in a report to the RA, not with the bylaw amendments, but with a clear summary of what the Special Committee is recommending for consideration and debate at the RA. We would envisage a fairly robust members forum linked with that. So non-RA delegates would have the opportunity to also hear the full presentation and understand and ask questions. This would be followed then by another six months of opportunity to finalize the recommendations by the Special Committee based on all of that feedback, and then to circulate that for comment and consideration by members, et cetera. Finally, culminating in a May 2023 RA and AGM, where the specific bylaw amendments as well as other recommendations, because the Special Committee is not just presenting suggested bylaw amendments. In fact, most of what they're presenting is suggestions on how to do work better, changes to processes, protocols, et cetera. So there'd be a combination, and they would present those to the Spring 2023 RA, and depending on which of those are accepted, that would determine the next steps in the following year. That summarizes as best I can what I think were the deliberations and consensus of a way forward from the Board of Directors and from the senior staff. And I'm going to stop there and first welcome any of those folks if they want to comment or add clarity or suggest maybe there were other issues that were of importance. But then we would like to open this up, the discussion, or your feedback, and to get a sense of whether you feel this is a reasonable approach to dealing with those bylaw amendments.
Dr. Sharstein, thank you very much. To proceed with some discussion, I'd like to suggest a couple of things. First of all, if you can turn on your video, please do, especially if you've got questions to ask. We'd love to see you. If you're in a safe place and it's not violating anyone around you's privacy, please put your video on. It'll also build collegiality to see everybody out, as has been mentioned, on a June evening. Also, please raise your hand, as Bonnie mentioned, go down to the reactions box and raise your hand, and we'll keep track of who has questions. And then we'll go in turns, and some people might like to ask a few questions, but we'd like to give everybody a chance to speak once or ask their first question, and then we'll come back to people's second questions. So if you're in line and you're wondering, hey, I haven't had my chance yet, you might be in your second turn, and we're waiting for first people. So I invite anyone who has any questions or comments, please raise your hand in the reactions box, and we look forward to your questions for Dr. Sharstein. Julie, I'm going to check with you. Do you have anyone in line yet? Some people may still be digesting what was said, so we'll give it a couple of minutes.
And while we're doing that, Kishore, just to emphasize, the most important thing I would say from this session, because we will have a follow-up now, where, as I say, I would like you all to stay. We really want to be sure you're comfortable that this is a, this is a process that feels right for you. You say, yeah, this feels like you're going down a road, you've turned it over to a group we trust, you've indicated a process we're comfortable with. Or if there are any questions about that or clarification. The specifics of the bylaw amendments themselves will get discussed, and I would encourage any of you, and kudos to Dr. Geller for this. He took the time to write specifically the amendments that he had issues of concern with. That is extremely helpful, and I would encourage any of you, when we're done this, and I hope I piqued your interest, you'll go back to these and you'll say, yeah, I want to know more about this, or I don't agree with that. That would be very helpful and encouraged, in addition to the meetings and other dialogue that will occur.
Thanks, Brian. We do have some people who'd like to participate. Can we go first to Dr. Lettingham? Please, go ahead. Oh, you're still muted there. Can we let Dr. Lettingham unmute, please? Go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. No, thank you for this, and I really, I do like the plan in terms of a greater and more in-depth consultation, because I think this is, this is really important, and I very much appreciated the report from the Special Committee. I must admit, I did think there were still some things I, I was uncertain if all my original concerns had been addressed, so I think a chance to discuss and have the full membership review will be good. I'm just wondering what the difference is in terms of, and maybe Dr. Sharstein can explain this, in terms of just extending the term of the Special Committee on Governance, which I believe you're proposing is the preferred option versus the interim legislation and policy committee, and then sort of tossing the Special Committee into it.
That's important clarification, for sure. Both need to occur. So what we're seeing is there is a special committee, but it was appointed by the RA, elected by the RA with a specific mandate and term to report back at this last spring's RA. What we're saying now is these other amendments fit within their area of expertise now. We will ask them to take them on, and we have met, you know, I met with that committee, and it says, we don't really do that. But in, in doing so, they need to have approval of their boss, which is the RA. So they'll be asking, I say, is it okay for us to keep going for another year and to do more than you told us to do originally? And my assumption is in this next meeting to follow immediately after this, the RA will be asked to do that specifically. Now, at the same time, our bylaws say there also needs to be, there's a little nuance, which is a bit confusing in our bylaws, is a Legend Policy Committee, that's completely separate, needs to see and be asked for their opinion about any bylaw amendments. A Legend Policy Committee hasn't existed for a couple of years, and there was going to be a suggestion from the board to the AGM that the board could assume that responsibility. And Dr. Geller and others have said, maybe that's not a good idea. Maybe there should be one. So the suggestion is to get, to deal with that, appoint, appoint a Legend Policy Committee to do that work. Whether it will continue will be determined by the AGM a year from now.
Okay, okay. And how, how many members would that committee have in addition to the Special Committee, Dr. Sharstein?
So it isn't restricted specifically. Typically, it's two to five members, and they're all appointed by the board. So the committee has to be appointed by the board. That's what, that's been the standard. I will flag, because that's coming to the RA, the Special Committee has agreed and would volunteer to be members of that Legend Policy Committee because of the intimate overlap. So one or more of the Special Committee members are willing to serve in the board, and I would ask anyone from the board or otherwise to comment, but in the board discussion of that, the suggestion was it would be important to canvas the membership, as they do for any committee, to say, anybody out there interested? Because if you are, we should consider you for the committee. So there would be the opportunity for any member interested when they're canvassed, which will happen sometime in the next month, two or three. This, there would be a canvassing of all members, saying, we need members for the Legend Policy. If you're interested, let us know. Some of those may be appointed. In addition to some or all of the members of the current Special Committee on Governance.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Letting, can we please unmute Dr. Letting? And hi, Dr. Letting, go ahead. We'll just unmute you here.
So I have to agree, it appears. Okay, well, what I wanted to say is that I didn't see this as a matter of choice. To me, it was kind of like all of the above should happen, and the agenda seemed to be pretty reasonable. So I don't know where there's any part of it that shouldn't happen. I see advantage to having consultation with it, with the legislation committee that isn't there right now, and they're performing it. I see advantages to having the Special Committee in place to, that already have expertise and focus to deal with it. Therefore, you know, deferring till the spring of 23 seems to make sense, and the agenda to me also makes sense. So I'm just, I'm on board with what you're doing and thinking, unless I'm missing something, I want to see you go ahead and do all of it.
That's wonderful news.
Thanks, Dr. Letting. Can we hear from Dr. Parai, please? Can you unmute Dr. Parai? Go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks. So, you know, I think all the proposed next steps are, seem pretty reasonable. My only question is, do we need to extend the committee until spring? Or can we, like, would consideration of extending it until the Fall RA? And discussing the amendments at that point, would that be enough time?
It's possible. In the fall, two, two, two important points to that, I think, and it's a good question. The amendments themselves to the bylaws can only be discussed at an annual general meeting, and that will occur in May of 2023. So given that that needs to be the case, and the board emphasized quite some time ago, because the timeframe for the Special Committee to wrap up was much shorter at one point. And as we were discussing this, and we were explaining to the board what they're doing, the board made a very clear statement. Do it right, not quick. And so take your time, however long it takes. What's far more important when you're done isn't the specific words of these bylaws. It's what does a membership think? Do they feel comfortable and confident that they have been involved, they've been consulted, they know what we're doing, they know where we're going? This is kind of the discussion that went on by the board. So the idea was, okay, let's take another year. And particularly now, at that time, it was expected that those, that package of bylaw amendments from the board would have passed. Now it didn't. So it even makes it more important to continue perhaps for a year, but it's, that's the particular, why May 23 is kind of a hard-stop date.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other comments to be made? If so, please raise your hand. Dr. Geller? Can we unmute Dr. Geller, please? Thanks, go ahead.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Thanks for the time, and I agree that the general outline is presented by Dr. Sharstein is quite reassuring. I just have, I have a couple, a couple of comments, if I may. One is, I think that the Special Committee and the LPC should remain distinct. I think that a significant conflict of interest may very well be a real or even imagined if we have a committee recommending to itself what the bylaw changes might be. Or a significant overlap of membership may also, just the appearance of it may not be quite exactly what we would like to see. I guess the only I would ask is that, in the timelines that have been laid out, is, because I do feel that the full year is appropriate, is that these not be rolled into things such as the President's Forum and the Fall Tour and those sorts of things? I mean, some of the Fall Tours, unless they've been significantly altered in the last little while. I mean, the time the SMA is given for the president to address is not always unlimited. And so they, some of the RNAs in the past have limited that quite dramatically, and I'm pretty sure that hasn't gotten much better. I do think that there needs to be dedicated, special meetings to discuss this. I mean, the, the fundamental principles of how we govern ourselves, how we elect our representatives, how we have conversations among ourselves to decide what is important to the profession cannot take second place to anything, and it should not be a time rush thing. I would, I'm heartened to hear Dr. Sharstein say, the board said this should be done right, not quickly. These are fundamental changes to how we govern ourselves, and they need to be considered quite deeply. So I would ask that that amendment be made, that these are, that these be dedicated, local engagements, and not just at the MSA level, but perhaps even at smaller levels. We do know that some of the MSAs can be quite large, and people don't actually want to drive, even between Estevan and Weyburn, which is only an hour. People don't tend to show up very much. Finally, I guess I would ask that the board and the Special Committee and the RA seriously consider the engagement of an external facilitator from someone from outside the organization, and I honor Dr. Sharstein's knowledge of the organization and his commitment to making it better for longer than I'm sure he would like us to mention. But, but I do think that, you know, a lot of the governance principles that we use now, I think, the parliamentary model we use now, were developed when communication was slow and travel was hard, and neither of those things are true now. And there are modern thoughts around governance that incorporate the fact that communication is fast and travel's not hard. And I think it might be very advantageous for the organization to engage external consultants who are familiar with some of the more, I mean, I hesitate to say modern, because it's not really what it is, but some of the, some of the governing structures that can take advantage of some of the changes that have come with travel and communication in the last little while. And I would ask that that be a very, the board, the RA strongly consider, including that. There's no point in having a motion, because it doesn't carry any more weight than what I just said.
Thanks, Brian. Clearly, and most people are all on the line as well, and they've heard you, and, and I, I will endeavor to make sure that, that your recommendations and suggestions, along with the others that you've made, are considered by, by the board and RA and the Special Committee. And in regard to an outside expert, you're absolutely right, I am not an expert, and I am deeply embedded within the SMA. I'm also deeply committed to it. It is a labor of love. But they, they definitely have sought outside information. So we have, through the work of the Special Committee, provided them with a lot of information about how others do business. But we have not retained an additional so-called expert consultant, which you're suggesting might be prudent. So I think they've heard you, and, and any, anyone is welcome to comment or make observations if they wish to that as to the proprietor need for that. And perhaps that's also an important kind of consideration when you see the full scope of what the Special Committee has done today in their presentation to the RA, because there was a fair bit of consideration of others and how they do business, but not with an expert outside consultant.
Thank you. We have another comment from Dr. Letting. Can we please unmute Dr. Letting? Go ahead, Dr. Letting.
Yes, I'm presuming in this process that when we're done it, we're going to have a stronger, better SMA. And personally, I think that is what we need, because I'm a little disillusioned with the whole system right now, and, and the way we seem to be getting not better but worse in terms of providing useful access to our patients. I know it's a plodding process, but I, I think that the best information and wisdom comes from in-house. I'm not sure exactly who is Brian, Brian is thinking we're going to bring from outside. I certainly think the more opinions we get, the better, but I think the best opinions we're going to get will be SMA. And I think the SMA has to become much stronger in its influence. We are, we are becoming weaker with SHA, we're becoming diluted in government. I, I find that our, our medical school is not achieving what I think it needs to achieve for a rural province. I, I see so many areas that have to be improved, and I think that we know the I I see so many areas that have to be improved, and I think that we know the answers better than an outside organization. I'd be. I, you can't hear too many people. You can't get too many opinions. But let's not get the idea in our head that somebody outside our organization knows more than we do. Because they don't think they do. I think our biggest challenge is for us to get our act together. Work together and actually communicate, which is what this process seems to be trying to do. And uh, I can't imagine what anybody's going to tell us except maybe how to get together better. If they can help with the process. And lead us to the leadership, I think we might come out of it okay. But I just a little leery about um handing off to somebody else and saying, oh, somebody else can do this better because I don't actually believe that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Dr. Letting. Dr. Nabuka. Can we unmute Dr. Nabuka, please? Go ahead, Dr. Nabuka.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, good evening, fellow colleagues. Um, and I'm the Nabuka here, uh, joining the meeting from this hour, but. I want to um, uh, make a comment, uh. Not just as a member of SMA, but also as a member of the special committee. On SMA governance, which I'm very privileged to serve on. Um. Just commenting a little bit in terms of how we've been undertaking this work since we were elected. Um, not to, you know, discredit comments from Dr. Gella in terms of the proposition for. An external consultant. I think it's, it's a good idea, but when we. Take a step back and look at where we started from in terms of this process. Which um followed the comprehensive environmental scan that Bernie and her staff undertook. Across uh uh PTMA's to try to look at, you know, what is going on and what can we learn from them, and that presentation was made to. Uh, uh, to the area and the general body. Dr. Shafton have also been an incredible resource, and I must give him kudos because. The amount of resources and the wealth of knowledge that he brings to the table to guide the work that we do. As a committee have been second to none. And I really want to um state categorically that. I personally do have a lot of confidence in the process that we are following right now. And in the approach that we're taking to make sure that we engage the general membership, including the RA delegates. And we need to trust that we are the best resource that we could get. People like yourself, Dr. Uh, Gilla, we've, 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 we've had a lot from you, and we really appreciate the comments and do the thing that we want to hear. We want to be criticized. So that at the end of the day. Constructively, we can collectively put out a clear governance process, a clear bylaw that will guide our association going forward. So again, for me, I think we have the best resource in-house that would enable us to get to where we want to be slowly but sure. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Lenny Pille, can we please unmute Dr. Pille? Can we unmute Dr. Pille, please?
Hi, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, uh, uh, Dr. Vesper, my video is giving me some problems just using this iPad, so hopefully you can bear with me. Lenny Pelé, uh, ENT down in Regina, also member on the SMA Governance Committee. Thank you for allowing me to be on that committee, uh, fellow colleagues. Um, you know, a couple of comments that I've, I'd like to make is that certainly the, the process that we've engaged in. And the work that the Governance Committee has done so far is, is very. Uh, is very good. Welcome to encouraging change in our organization and good change. Um, in terms of the appointment of an, an added external reviewer, I kind of agree with Dr. Nabuka here and Dr. Letting. That I don't think we'll add any more value presently. We may add value as an, for an external reviewer, if it's some sort of legal resource. Or somebody who, you know, needs to tweak some sort of legal thing in the bylaws. That we have missed. Uh, that's where I would see a value for any additional resource. I do like some of the ideas that have been bounced around in terms of we need to go slow with the. Um, reform because we have a good chance to make it right and a good chance to make it last for many years. So, you know, thinking that this is only going to take six months or a year may not be the ideal. My idea would be that there would be general amendments which we looked at as typographical uh. Kind of changes, for example, from. Um, uh, re- RAs, sorry, regional medical associations, MSAs, those little small areas. Can be uh cleared up in the next few months or in the next AGM. And then the nitty gritty is what we really want to make big changes to. With the nominations committee, for example, and the powers of the nominations committee. And we need to take our time while doing that. So, you know, the, there is time, there is place, and we, we can do that slowly. I also like the other idea that we can decant a lot of the discussions. For changes to the smaller meetings, because there are many people who won't stand up in this meeting and talk because they just won't do it. But at a smaller gathering, they may talk and we can get ideas from them. So at the local MSAs, local RAs. Uh, you know, we can get those ideas, and even with the meetings with the president's tour, I would encourage that. And we can bring those ideas to whether it's the governance committee or the LPC committee, which is resuscitated. We can incorporate that into the bylaw changes and then present that at the May. Um, spring RA next year and then continue with the process. So I would like to continue to encourage the engagement of the membership with those ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pille. We are at the part of this meeting when we need to uh prepare to move on to the next meeting. And so I would like to give Dr. Sharstein a, a final comment, if he would like to, because I know that there is. Um, an expression of intent that we'd like to put out. Uh, worded as a motion, but I think as an expression of intent. Dr. Sharstein?
No, I'm fine. I appreciate the input. I appreciate the interest people have in this. I think that bodes well for the next stage of reconfiguring and reinvigorating the uh. The association. So I think that's, that's very helpful, and the commentary has been as well. And as you say, we just have a, a straw dog resolution, so to speak, to get a feeling of a general sense of intent, which I think we've got from the conversation, but. Could get specific direction with a resolution.
Can we see that, please? So, a- as pointed out, this is worded as a resolution, and it's really to get a general expression of, of support for these. Uh, this presentation, and as you see, be it resolved that the general membership approves the work plan and referral of the board. Board proposed bylaw amendments to the special committee on SMA governance as presented. And so we'd like to take a poll and see what the general support for uh, for this is. Can we open the poll, please? Okay, the poll is open. We have thirty seconds. Well, the results of the poll are favorable. Dr. Sharstein, you can see that. Uh, is there, before we move on to a short break and then the next meeting, any final comments, Dr. Sharstein?
Just thank you. Your support is warmly received. I, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board and others who've contributed to thinking about where to next. And so thank you for that endorsement, and we will make every effort, or I will attempt to help. The board and the committee make every effort to carry out the intent, which is that engagement uh as we move forward.
Hey, thanks. Oh, sorry, I see Dr. Geller is, is waving his hand. Can you unmute Dr. Geller, please?
Yeah, I, I thank you. I just wanted to, if, I mean, I tried, I tried to raise my hand before you moved to the vote, and it's not that I disagree with the vote. Um, but it's, I just think, I just wanted to clarify what I meant by an external consultant. I mean, um. None of us are experts on engagement. And none of us are experts on governance. We are absolutely experts on what we want as physicians and how, and and how we want. Um, uh, to be governed, but I think it's reasonable to consider. Um. You know, these are the things that we don't know, right? This, you know, like, how, how can we maximize the use of. Social media, for instance, or uh Zoom meetings to engage um. Uh, our membership. If anyone had ever asked me if we'd have seventy-two people on the line at nine or at, 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 at five minutes after seven on the fifteenth of June. I, I would have given five hundred thousand dollar bet to them that that would never have happened. Okay, so I guess it's part of my point is, is that, that these. These new modalities of talking to people um can be leveraged in a, in a very dramatic way. And none of us are experts in.
Thank you. Um, we are going to move on. Uh, so I have nineteen oh six on my clock. We'll have a five-minute break. So please check your clock at five minutes, and by my clock, we're going to reconvene for the uh. RA, a special meeting of the RA at nineteen eleven. All right, we'll see you in five minutes.
Kishore, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Brian.
Great.
Barely over the music.
Yeah, we need the music off.
Okay, there we are. Thanks, Ankar.
They were just having some technical issues again in terms of getting the slide deck and stuff ready. And we look like we're in business.
Okay.
We're good to go.
So welcome. Whoops. The host is not allowing participants to meet themselves. Okay, so you guys do the talking. John, go ahead. And I can't get down. Where am I going down?
Welcome to the special meeting of the representative assembly. My name is Jeffrey. I'm the president of the SMA. We've been having a few technical issues, but I think we're getting through them. I will start with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that we are gathering on treaty two, four, five, six, and ten lands and the traditional homeland of the Maite. We pay our respects to the traditional caretakers of this land, and we reaffirm our commitment to reconciliation, our shared stewardship of the land, and our relationship.
Thanks, Dr. Jeffrey. And I want to just double check because we are having some challenges with our audio. Brian Charstein, maybe you can give me a thumbs up if I'm coming through. I have a, oh, I have two thumbs up. Thank you. Folks, welcome back. I'm Kishore Visvanathan. And it's my pleasure to facilitate this special meeting of the representative assembly. I hope that most people were able to be part of the first session. If not, I will welcome and reintroduce our special guest, a consultant for a governance review, Dr. Brian Sharfstein. And he's going to lead us through a governance report. Dr. Sharfstein.
Thank you, Kishore. And I understand the time and the date. And I'll begin with an apology. There is a massive amount of material that the special committee needs you to know. And we could do that. And again, I want to emphasize, I have been asked to present on their behalf. I'm not presenting what I think. I am presenting the consensus suggestions and considerations and recommendations of the special committee. And I say that because on some of the recommendations, there are literally been hours of debate and discussion. And they've come to a point where they've reached a consensus they can live with, but with many varying opinions expressed. Similarly, for the board. And what I will try to do is to present to you the consensus understanding that on some of those recommendations, you'll want to weigh in and have significant debate, if not tonight, at some point between now and May of 2023, for sure. So with that sort of caveat in mind, I will attempt to get you through this very quickly. I'm going to apologize. I could assume that all of the RA delegates have read a hundred percent of what we sent to you and understand it completely. And that would be fantastic because we're almost finished our meeting tonight. Or I could assume you are incredibly busy folks, and you actually haven't read any of it. In which case, we'll be here a really long time. I'm going to take the middle ground and assume you're comfortable and familiar with the material, or you will become comfortable and familiar. And I'll emphasize at the end how important that is. And it came up in our last meeting in terms of communicating to the members. The folks left on this call are the key to engagement. Because if you don't understand the governance proposals, it's hard for us to transmit that to the regular members. So we're going to rely on you to help us do that. So thank you very much for for your time. Next slide. So what we're going to try to do is have you, I'm going to go very quickly over what the governance committee would have reported to you in the spring, had time allowed, which is their work to date. It included a little bit of unfinished business, which we'll also highlight. But more importantly, we'll ask you to consider and approve, just as the general meeting earlier did, an expanded mandate for the committee and a work plan. Fortunately, I'm hoping all of you, or the vast majority of you, heard and saw the discussion of the general membership and will therefore be fairly comfortable with that without a lot of time being taken. So I am going to ask, as well, I'm going to ask Bonnie to get ready for the whirlwind because we're going to go very quickly. Forget the background. We already covered it. There is a special committee. It has five members. I would only emphasize you elected them. They weren't a handpicked. They weren't appointed. They aren't a cabal from somewhere that we didn't understand. They were in a very open and democratic process, elected by the RA to do their job. One has been replaced, Dr. Hammond, as he had not continued as an RA delegate, and he has been replaced by Dr. Lenny Pele. The mandate of the committee, and I do want to, I'm going to spend a minute here because this to me is the critical piece. This committee has accepted the mandate you gave it as an RA and has added to that. And everything they do and all of the suggestions they make are intended to maximize the efficiency of the SMA. Make it more effective. Efficiency because resources are scarce. Effective because, as I think Dr. Letting spoke, there is a question of are we losing our effectiveness? And as they do that, to bear in mind, all of that must be done in a way that enhances the transparency, fairness, and accountability of the organization and its leaders, and includes emphasis on equity, diversity, and inclusion. And those are principles that hold for all of their work. The work plan, they've met every two weeks. They've been meeting up until the last RA. They did look very widely at other legislate, at our legislation, as well as governance models and materials from other PTMA's, the CMA, a little bit of American stuff. So they've had a lot of information to digest as they made their decisions and recommendations. They adopted a two-stage work plan. This is a little important. They, they, stage two is what you, the RA, told them to do. You had a resolution that said, we're worried about the way we're doing business in certain formats, in particular, our election process and perhaps some others. They said, let's start from the basics. Let's look first at the overall structure of the SMA and its governance processes and review those first to be sure they're okay. Because if those aren't okay, part two doesn't follow very easily. So they did stage one and stage two to follow. And they're going to report to you their findings. I am very happy to report the first bullet point here. After all of that deliberation, and I, I'll take the presenter's liberty to make a personal comment. This is a group with a broad perspective and I think careful consideration of options. Their conclusion was the SMA has stood the test of time. The governance structure we have today is almost identical to the governance structure that existed thirty, forty, and fifty years ago, with some modifications in some modernization, and it has proven a fairly solid governance structure. No major deficiencies. Process is a different question. We'll come to that. And I think that's important. They used the analogy where we would like the SMA to go from good to great, not from poor to good or whatever else. But they did identify some areas they thought might improve, both structurally and more important by process. Yes. Next slide. And I'm going to ask Kishore and others, if anybody has any issue and wants to raise something as we're moving along, please feel free to raise your hand. Don't wait for me to dump, do this massive brain dump without asking. You were provided in your RA package four important documents. The master document gave you the current situation, the recommendations, as well as the rationale. So I would encourage you, if you haven't, it hopefully gives you a fairly simple explanation of all of the considerations. They also look carefully at a potential future nominating and appointments committee, and there's some terms of reference. We'll come to that. They then looked, and this was stage two, very carefully at how nominations are currently done and how elections are conducted, and they have some significant suggestions there. And finally, because they are putting some reliance on something called an attribute matrix, they assume that many of you would say, what the heck is that? So they have included a sample, and I would caution that that is not the matrix they intend to use. It would be, that's one of the unfinished pieces of work. So what are they recommending? First, the overall governance structure, and as I suggested, and this is a snapshot of it, there are no significant changes overall. And I, to emphasize a couple of the important points to that, the SMA is relatively unique in its structure. The representative assembly is the all-powerful authoritative body. And hence, references and comparison to annual meetings of for-profit or not-for-profit corporations don't have this. They have taken essentially a parliamentary model and superimposed it on a not-for-profit model. And the committee's perception is they've taken the best of both. So you have a process by which you have have given the authority to an all-powerful body, the representative assembly. They must be elected, and they are elected carefully at home and must maintain the support of that electorate if they want to move to the next level, which is an elected board. So you have two filters to get to the board. Support back home, and then the support of your peers within the RA who see you work. And the committee thought that has stood well the test of time. There are a couple of other committees that are specifically dealt with. We'll get to. And then there are the core components. In terms of the core, the, the, the RA is made up of reps for medical staff associations, which they are suggesting should be maintained as they were with the proposed change to the rep by pop formula, and I'll come to that. That's the major constituent. There are also sections. And the, there is currently one rep from each section, and they are elected by the section. And again, the committee is recommending a slight modification to the rep by pop formula that we'll, we'll come to. The board thinks this idea of the sections is critical in the EDI framework. This is where marginalized and underrepresented groups can organize and can apply for section status. And so section status and representation is one of the avenues to acknowledge and allow marginalized or underrepresented groups to to be represented. And the board is even considering, do we need criteria if there should be requests? For example, retired physicians might be an example. Foreign graduates or or might be another one. So there are options through the section process, which the committee thought was very positive. The two other constituents, students and residents, I'm going to pass over quickly. Status quo for now, but engage the students and residents in conversations about do they see this meeting their needs? So there will be further discussion over the course of the year. Currently, both students and residents were comfortable with the existing relationship. No one saw a burning platform or overwhelming need to change, but students and residents both welcomed continued dialogue over the next six months. That's the constituents of the RA. And of course, the RA itself is, as you see here, a representative body elected by and from the members with ultimate authority. And the proposal is keep that with some amendments to the rep by pop. I would also note that, and we'll come to that on the MSAs, there are some changes from the board sponsored by law changes. The Board of Directors, lots of discussion about that, lots of models out there. Your committee is suggesting no change. Small board elected from among the RA with that double filter. And with the nominee committee, we'll come to that, how you get that broad perspective on the board was felt to be historically have worked well and should be preserved. Committees, there are two named committees, and there will be suggestions for both. It is suggested the nominated committee should continue to be a committee of the RA, but expanded and joint with the board, and we'll come to that. And as well, they're suggesting the finance committee have some amendments as well. Continue to be specifically named as a significant committee accountable to the RA, but also some change in representation to include both board and elected RA reps. And finally, standing committees, and the board didn't deal with those. It will now, of course, potentially be asked to deal with recommendations on legislation and policy committee. But they didn't see the necessity for changing the option for the board to appoint, as it needs, committees, economics, role practice, whatever. And that would continue as board-appointed committees. That is the sum of recommendations for the overall governance structure. At the risk of time, unless someone has a burning question, I'm going to just proceed headlong into the the rest of the elements of their presentation, but accept that we can come back to any of these during the Q and A. So now the specific elements, because they did do a deep dive into each of them. First, the RA itself, the the rep by medical staff associations, no change. No change to the two-year term. The Chapter Seven amendments will now be coming to them in terms of the ones you saw for the AGM. Those will be coming back to you, and whichever ones the special committee think should continue would be coming back as a proposal as well. And finally, they're proposing a new formula for rep by pop.
All of that must be done in a way that enhances the transparency, fairness and accountability of the organization and its leaders. And includes emphasis on equity, diversity and inclusion. And those are principles that hold for all of their work. The work plan they've met every two weeks. Uh, they've been meeting up until the last RA. They did look very widely at other legisla- at our legislation as well as governance models and materials. From other PTMA's, the CMA, a little bit of American stuff. So they've had a lot of information to digest as they made their decisions and recommendations. They adopted a stu- two-stage work plan. This is a little important. They fir- they, stage two is what you, the RA, told them to do. You had a resolution that said, we're worried about the way we're doing business in certain formats, in particular, our election process and perhaps some others. They said, let's start from the basics. Let's look first at the overall structure of the SMA and its governance processes. And review those first to be sure they're okay, because if tho- those aren't okay. Part two doesn't follow very easily. So they did stage one and stage two to follow. And they're going to report to you their findings. I am very happy to report the first bullet point here. After all of that deliberation, and I, uh, I'll take the, the presenter's liberty to, to make a personal comment. This is a group with a broad perspective. Um, and I think careful consideration of options. Their conclusion was, the SMA has stood the test of time. The governance structure we have today is almost identical to the governance structure that existed thirty, forty and fifty years ago. With some mod- modifications in some modernization, and it has proven a fairly solid governance structure. No major deficiencies. Uh, process is a different question, we'll come to that. Uh, and I think that's important. They used the analogy where we would like the SMA to go from good to great. Not from poor to good or whatever else. Uh, but they did identify some areas they thought might improve, both structurally and more important by process. Next slide, and I'm gonna ask Kishore and others, if anybody has any issue and wants to raise something as we're moving along, please feel free to raise your hand. Uh, don't wait for me to dump, do this massive brain dump without asking. Um, you were provided in your RA package four important documents. The master document gave you the current situation, the recommendations as well as the rationale. So I would encourage you, if you haven't, it hopefully gives you a fairly simple explanation of all of the considerations. They also look carefully at a potential future nominating and appointments committee, and there's some terms of reference, we'll, we'll come to that. They then looked, and this was stage two, very carefully at how nominations are currently done and how elections are conducted, and they have some significant suggestions there. And finally, because they are putting some reliance on something called an attribute matrix. They assume that many of you would say, what the heck is that? So they have included a sample. And I would caution that that is not the matrix they intend to use. It would be, that's one of the unfinished pieces of work. So, what are they recommending? First, the overall governance structure, and as I suggested, and this is a snapshot of it. There are no significant changes overall. Um, and I, to emphasize a couple of the important points to that. The SMA is relatively unique in its structure. The representative assembly is the all-powerful authoritative body. And hence, um, references and comparison to annual meetings of for-profit or not-for-profit corporations uh, don't have this. They have taken essentially a parliamentary model and superimposed it on a not-for-profit model. And the committee's perception is they've taken the best of both. So you have a process by which you have, have given the authority to an all-powerful body, the representative assembly. They must be elected, and they are elected carefully at home and must maintain the support of that electorate if they want to move to the next level, which is an elected board. So you have two filters to get to the board. Support back home, and then the support of your peers within the RA who see you work. And the, uh, the committee thought that has stood well the test of time. There are a couple of other committees that are specifically dealt with, we'll get to. And then there are the core components. In terms of the, the core, the, uh, the, uh, the RA is made up of reps for medical staff associations, which they are suggesting should be maintained as they were with a proposed change to the rep by pop formula, and I'll come to that. That's the major constituent. There are also sections. And the, uh, there is currently one rep from each section, and they are elected by the section. And again, the, the committee is recommending a slight modification to the rep by pop formula that we'll, we'll come to. Um, the board thinks this idea of the sections is critical in the EDI framework. This is where marginalized and underrepresented groups can organize and can apply for section status. And so section status and representation is one of the avenues to acknowledge and allow marginalized or underrepresented groups to, uh, to be represented. And, uh, and the board is even considering, do we need criteria if there should be requests? For example, retired physicians might be an example. Uh, foreign graduates or, or, uh, might be another one. So there are options through the section process, which the committee thought was very positive. The two other, uh, constituents, students and residents, I'm gonna pass over quickly. Status quo for now, but engage the students and residents in conversations about do they see this meeting their needs? So there will be further discussion over the course of the year. Currently, both students and residents were comfortable with the existing relationship. No one saw a burning platform or overwhelming need to change. But students and residents both welcomed continued dialogue over the next six months. That's the constituents of the RA. And of course, the RA itself is, uh, as you see here, a representative body elected by and from the members with ultimate authority. And the proposal is keep that with some amendments to the rep by pop. I would also note that, and we'll come to that on the MSAs, there are some changes from the board sponsored, uh, by law changes. Uh, the board of directors, lots of discussion about that, lots of models out there. Your committee is suggesting no change. Small board, elected from among the RA with that double filter. Uh, and with the nominating committee, we'll come to that, how you get that broad perspective on the board was felt to be historically have worked well and should be preserved. Committees, uh, there are two named committees, and there will be suggestions for both. It is suggested the nominating committee should continue to be a committee of the RA, but expanded uh, and joint with the board, and we'll come to that. And as well, they're suggesting the finance committee have some amendments as well. Continue to be specifically named as a significant committee accountable to the RA, but also some change in representation to include both board and elected RA reps. And finally, standing committees, and the board didn't deal with those. It will now, of course, potentially be asked to deal with recommendations on legislation and policy committee. But they didn't see the necessity for changing the option for the board to appoint as it needs committees, economics, role practice, whatever. And that would continue as board-appointed committees. That is the sum of recommendations for the overall, uh, governance structure. Uh, at the risk of a time, unless someone has a burning question, I'm going to just proceed headlong into the, the rest of the elements of their presentation. But except that we can come back to any of these during the Q and A. So now the specific elements, because they did do a deep dive into each of them. First, the RA itself, the, the rep by medical staff associations, no change. No change to the two-year term. The chapter seven amendments will now be coming to them in terms of the ones you saw, uh, for the AGM. Those will be coming back to you, and whichever ones the special committee think should continue would be coming back as a proposal as well. And finally, they're proposing a new formula for rep by pop. Next slide, and it's unreadable, so I'll highlight a couple of things. This had intense discussion and debate. I would observe, uh, perhaps no simple consensus. Um, there was lots of support for the current. The, the rationale here is when the rep by pop formula was developed from till now, we have more than twice as many members. And so, um, the, the formula may not be as representative and appropriate as it might have been when we had half the number of members when it was last revised. So what the committee is recommending is, uh, the option that would add a couple of tiers at the bottom. Where it used to say, if you're more than five hundred, you get fifteen reps, it would now add a five hundred to six, to six to seven, two or three tiers, which would allow Saskatoon and Regina to, would have uh, a few, uh, three in the case of one and, uh, five in the case of the other reps by virtue of a huge increase in their doctor population. The, uh, countervailing opinion was keep the status quo. After hours of discussion and debate and con- and consideration, I would say the committee is recommending a, that small increase. Where it would see Saskatoon going from fifteen to eighteen, Regina from fifteen to seventeen. Total number of delegates, seventy-six to eighty-one, recognizing each delegate to the RA from Saskatoon and Regina is now representing way more members. Forty-four in the case of Regina, seventy-three in the case of Saskatoon, then a rep from any of the other constituencies. The countervailing arguments were, a lot of the section reps are from Saskatoon and Regina as well, and isn't fifteen enough? At the end of the day, that was the suggestion.
Dr. Dr. Sharfstein?
Yes.
You, you invited questions or comments as we go along. Dr. Pele, uh, would like to comment. Can we unmute Dr. Pele, please? Go ahead, Dr. Pele.
Uh, sorry, Ryan, to interrupt you, and thank you, Dr. Visvanathan, for that. Um, Dr. Sharfstein, excuse me, this has been a popular question, particularly from the local MSA here in Regina. I know this was discussed at our local meeting. And I'm wondering whether I can invite Dr. Parvez. I did see his name earlier on on the schedule. I won- I'm wondering whether you could invite comments from Dr. Parvez or anybody who feels the need to comment on this rep by pop formula. What kind of ideas do they have? Is this a good thing? Do they have different ideas on this? Because I think it's very important that we hear from our members about how we can do better with this. Um, there is the consensus that there's too few members uh, in the RA from such a large representative population. So I'd invite our local delegates to please comment and help us here so that we can make this a better process. Thank you.
Dr. Stridam. Great, can we unmute Dr. Stridam, please? Go ahead, even.
Good evening. I just want to, to mention that, uh, this specific item was not only discussed at board level, but it's also discussed at the MSA levels by, by the presidents of the different medical staff associations. So this is not, this, this is something that was broadly discussed, um, the feedback coming from the special committee to the board, and also shared with the, the presidents of the different MSA's, uh, just for, just for background.
Thank you, Dr. Stridam. Can we unmute Dr. Parvez, please? Dr. Parvez, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Kishore. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, yeah, this is an ongoing issue. I mean, this is for a decade. I, I am fighting for it. Um, I don't know, this looks to me like a bargaining going on. Oh, fifteen can be increased to seventeen, and fifteen can be increased to eighteen. Dr. Uh, Sharfstein knows my feeling very well when I was YDP and I was the board and all those things. I, I, I'm not in a bargaining position at this moment. I am looking for some sort of formula. We are dealing with, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and population keeps on increasing. We are dealing with seven hundred and eight hundred members. And representation, very respectfully, only fifteen, we have it. So we discuss about all these things with the help of, uh, my board members and all those things, and we discussed in detail with my executives as well. I don't know how to rationalize this. And this, this fifteen seats, correct me if I'm wrong, is there for twenty-five years. So, um, I don't know, last time I was told was in, something around two thousand. And since two thousand, now it is twenty-twenty-two, and it is unchanged. So, yeah, we welcome your extra position, but again, I'm very respectfully saying, we are not setting up some sort of precedent, we are not setting up some sort of formula. We are just, uh, begging and asking and getting a little bit extra. When we are looking at a very small, small centers and their representation is fifty, sixty, seventy members and getting quite a bit seat, ten to everyone. I'm asking for fifty seats, at least fifty delegates for Regina, and fifty delegates or fifty-five delegates for Saskatoon. I know it's impossible. I know it's not going to happen. But at least some sort of formula should be suggested. Thank you. I'll stop here.
Thanks, Dr. Parvez. Dr. Jevry, can we please unmute Dr. Jevry? Go ahead.
Thank you. I have, uh, I'm a specialist and I'm in a big city, yeah, and that's the group that I think is well represented. I don't think it's a matter of fifteen or seventeen or eighteen. Um, I think there are voices, uh, from Saskatoon and Regina which are heard at the RA. I do feel that it's a concern for smaller centers and more rural areas. I don't want their voices to be overwhelmed. So, um, my two cents for what it's worth, I would, uh, prefer to, you know, a small, maybe incremental increase, fine. But I want to make sure we continue to hear voices from across the province, not just Saskatoon and Regina. Um, I want to hear everybody's voice.
Thank you. Dr. Letting, can we unmute Dr. Letting, please? Go ahead, Dr. Letting.
Thank you. Yes, I have a little bit to say about the, uh, increase in Saskatoon and Regina reps, because I think the reps you got are presenting your points of view quite adequately right now. I don't think you're really diminished or increased by adding a lot more memberships, except more majority. I think the important play, thing about the RA is to represent the different, uh, issues in different areas and in rural areas. We have a tough time even getting members there, and getting good members there is a problem. Um, I'd like to make sure that we do have a good voice to represent the rural population. Because I think the important thing in a really good RA is to be statesman and to work for the common good of the province. This isn't really about rural versus city, but we do need the rural voice there to get that other voice there. And when I vote, I very often vote, vote myself in favor of, uh, urban issues just because I am not happy with the access that city patients have with the system you have, and I do support you, and I think, I hope we all do that. But the diminu- the diminished voice and, uh, ability to vote on our own issues by diminishing our numbers is not necessarily that positive. I, 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 I don't think that the city are gaining a lot by more members, except the ability to to basically crush out our concerns and outvote us, and I don't want to see that happen. I don't know if I'm saying this very well, but, uh, I see a problem with this kind of, uh, issue, and I think quite honestly, I don't, I don't see the committee of members in front of me on, on the table, but I know we've got a lot of, uh, city population and, on that committee. And that was one of my concerns when I saw it being formed, is that we, we needed a little bit less, um, a, a little less, uh, city population and a little more balance with the other centers. Because we all have our issues, and we all need to be represented in the end.
Thanks, Dr. Letting. Uh, can we unmute Dr. Geller, Geller, please? Dr. Geller, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not an RA delegate, so I suppose I need to ask permission to speak from, and I guess, but I don't know if there's a motion required or anything like that.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Um, so I guess this is exactly the problem I'm talking about, right? So here we are, this is the RA. The RA, as Dr. Sharfstein eloquently pointed out, is the be-all and end-all of the SMA, it governs it. So now we have a special meeting of the RA, and I'm not a member of the RA, but we have a special meeting of the RA arguing about how to divide power, um, and whether they should be giving power here, there, or anywhere. Um, when in reality, the people who should be making this decision are the members. Uh, the members should be telling us how they want to be governed. Rep by pop is old, old, old-school way to govern people. And perhaps there's other ways that might be a little bit more effective and might address many of the concerns that we've heard here already. And, and I think that what, in a perfect world, what would happen is the membership would be engaged in a series of options of how they might want to govern themselves. Um, rather than the RA arguing about how much power it wants to divide out among itself.
Kishore, if I might, I just want to make sure though it's clear. This would require a bylaw amendment, and it's the AGM that will do that. That's the members. This is simply discussion. And I would assume this is one of multiple discussions that should happen over the next year on what would be the reasonable rep by pop formula that everyone would be comfortable with. So I absolutely take the point. Members ought to care about this. Um, but just to be sure, you know, that we're clear. If the RA passed a resolution today to adopt this, that still needs to end up with a bylaw amendment. Because that's in bylaws, and that is the AGM.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sharfstein. Let me thank Dr. Paray for her patience and invite her to make her comment. Can you unmute Dr. Paray, please?
Okay, thank you. Um, so, you know, to Dr. Parvez's point earlier, I mean, I, I think this is a pretty fair formula, and I agree with the previous speakers who have mentioned that they don't want to drown out rural voices and rural opinions, um, by having, um, excess representation in the cities. And I do think that's why we have an RA. Um, I would actually suggest, um, as a follow-up to Dr. Parvez, that what we actually need is a stronger MSAs and stronger engagement on the MSA level. Um, so that we are actually hearing all the opinions of our colleagues in our regional areas that we can then bring forward as the RA to the broader, um, SMA.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Stridam, I see your hand up. Just before we go to you, I, I want to ask Dr. Sharfstein. Uh, Dr. Sharfstein, you have, of course, a very good feel for the rest of your presentation. And I know you're grateful for the comments from the members. Um, are you wanting to hear additional comments at the end, or do you want to continue on this particular item?
Perfect timing, because that was, I was going to comment once this conversation stopped. This is an incredibly helpful conversation that just happened. But it's, of course, takes time. And, uh, we're on slide twenty-five of sixty-three. So that is the challenge, is to get the, get the RA comfortable with the recommendations, confident, but also an opportunity to, to observe, and so that, and so I guess what I'd have to say is there will need to be additional interaction with the RA, whether it's through survey, other meetings, could be other special meetings, there will be an RA in the fall. So this isn't finished, this is initial, and similarly, I've come to the first of a few potentially equally one might say controversial. So, um, I, 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 I was grateful that you let this go on to get a flavor for how we'll need to debate several of the others. Um, and some initial commentary within reasonable time. And I, and I think your question you posed to me, I would say, is a question for the RA. How long do you want to be here? How long can you devote to feedback now? I would just observe that we would be not quite half-done. Uh, what I would go through, I'd say we're about a third done. Let that perhaps weigh how much we want to debate or discuss individual points. But it's crystal clear, this issue will need significant discussion before an amendment is voted on a year from now.
Thanks. With that in mind, Dr. Sharfstein, we'll give you back the floor. And, uh, keeping in mind your gracious invitation to ask people to weigh in as the issues come up. I wonder if we could let you finish your presentation, have people keep notes themselves, and then ask for their comments at the end. Does that seem okay?
Sure, and, and we could do it, I think, in a about three different chunks, so I'll
Okay, the floor is yours. Thanks.
Thank you. So the next is, uh, not surprisingly, the sections. The committee thinks this, the idea of sections, i.e. special interest groups, which historically were the specialties but could be others, is a great idea. Two-year term unlimited, keep it the same. They are proposing again a modification in the rep by pop formula. On this issue, we have not consulted, I would say, widely with the sections themselves, as we have with the MSAs and the previous. The suggestion is, there are a few very large sections with only one rep. And the, the objection made, for example, in family practice being by far the largest, that, uh, one family doctor is going to represent rural and urban and all of the mix of family doctors. And that is a great challenge. Similarly, you see anesthesia has a hundred and seventeen. So the suggestion was to modify, so it isn't one per section of more than ten, no matter what. But to allow for more than one when you're getting up into the hundreds of members and beyond. And the option that they are proposing is two, which would see going from twenty-five section reps to thirty with an additional one from, uh, anesthesia. An additional two from, uh, three from family practice. An additional one from internal medicine, pediatrics and psychiatry. Again, this is a proposal for, obviously, section consideration and RA discussion. Um, whether you want to keep the status quo, and three options were discussed, and others could be as well. The, uh, students and residents I've referenced, status quo pending discussions with them. The next one, and, um, this, I'll flag in advance, is going to be widely debated. The, uh, the committee considered the current AGM and its lack of decision-making authority other than it approves and can modify bylaws. It can pass motions and make recommendations, but they're only recommendations. Uh, and it does receive financial statements, and we've had a discussion already, do they approve or not? In the end, it doesn't matter, because the financial statements can't be changed, so they receive them. All to say, they have relatively little decision-making power other than bylaw amendments. Um, and in the discussion, then, the suggestion was, could we not replace what has been a very cursory? AGMs tend to be very quick, poorly attended, other than RA delegates, who happen to be there anyway. Um, and may give the perception of power to the members, but don't, doesn't give that, because nobody attends, it's not convenient. And as in their current way, they're, they've sort of evolved relatively non-empowering. So the suggestion was eliminate the AGM, but maintain and enhance the ability for members to attend and participate in RA meetings, which is the parliament and the ultimate decision-making authority. And members ought to hear what their parliamentarians think and say, and be able to contribute to that. As well as the idea of the members forum, um, as a formal invitation for discussion. And there is still the option for special meetings, either at the call of the board and/or a group of members um, as well. And so, there is this proposal coming forward from the special committee to eliminate the AGM and enhance all of these other processes to encourage and increase member participation in a more meaningful way. Uh, I suspect there's lots of hands which might pop up on that, and we'll allow that soon. Um, board of directors, essentially no change. And there was a lot of discussion, both the membership, eight members, five officers, a president, vice president, past president. membership, eight members, five officers, a president, vice president, past president, honorary treasurer, and a chair, a student and a resident, and one CMA board rep. Elected, all of those elected from the RA. And of course, therefore must be elected to the RA at home first, the double filter, which they felt was very appropriate. There were some questions about, do folks, when they're voting back home, recognize that? And therefore, there is a need, and we'll come to that in process discussion subsequently. There is a need for, for clarity in the election process. In addition, the suggestion is, there is some suggested changes. One of those, next slide, one of those would be in the term of office. Currently, they're elected annually, all of the members. The suggestion is, it's at minimum two years to get up to speed. So the term should be two years, and there should be a maximum, which there is it now, which would be three. I would note for RA delegates, there is no maximum, and the committee did discuss that and thought that's quite fair. If you continue to be elected from home, just as you would to our parliament, by the members in an open and transparent process, and an unlimited number of years on the RA as a delegate would be acceptable. But for the Board of Directors, they're proposing a two-year term and a three maximum terms, unless you move on to become the president, which then will allow for an extension. In terms of the actual, there was a lot of discussion, many jurisdictions have, instead of a vice president, they elect a president-elect who then will become the president and essentially has two years. And a lot of discussion about the pros and cons. In the end, the Special Committee felt our current structure has worked well, generally results in orderly transition, but affords the opportunity or chance that you're elected to, to, to that position for a year, and if for some reason it didn't work out, that means that allows the opportunity to vote for someone different in the position. So they're suggesting you would keep those same executive members as currently, and all including the president would be elected by the RA from among RA delegates. That's the one other issue was discussed at length. Should the president be voted from, on, by the general membership, separate from all of the other officers and, and, uh, members, or by the RA? The committee is comfortable to recommend maintaining the current process. Again, I assume a fair bit of thoughts and comments would be forthcoming about that. Finally, the committees, Finance Committee, critical, keep it. Um, and currently, it's the treasurer and two or four ordinary members appointed by the board. Um, next slide. The suggestion is, it's important enough, it ought to be a joint committee of the RA and board, responsible to both, would continue to have the honorary treasurer and two members appointed by the board, but also two members elected by and from the RA to provide that linkage, that accountability to the RA as well directly. And again, a two-year term, maximum three, and the board would appoint a chair from amongst the committee members. Their mandate duties, accountabilities otherwise would remain the same. And finally, the nominating committee, lots of discussion, of course, and a whole next section on their process. But there is a nominating committee currently that is three members elected by the RA with a chair and one other, uh, plus a chair and one other member, both of whom would be ordinary members named by the board. So currently, um, that's the way it's done, and it has a mandate to prepare a slate of officers, director speaker, deputy speaker, board reps, and nominating committee members. There also exists an Appointments and Awards Committee, which facilitates and assists the board in making all of its appointments. It has three members appointed by the board, uh, and from the board, and a chair, who is the current past president. The nominating, or the, your Special Committee on Governance looked at that and processes across the country and is recommending amalgamating those two committees. And what they would be suggesting is you have a nominating and appointments committee, and that that committee would have a mandate combining the two existing. That is a joint committee, it's a joint of the board and RA. Three would be elected, mine from the RA, and they would not be current board members. Two would be ordinary members appointed by the board, and the past president would serve as the ex-official chair, non-voting. Two-year term and a maximum of three terms. This committee would then report to the board for committee appointments and recommend to the board for committee appointments, and it would report and recommend to the RA for all of the elected positions that the RA elects. What you had circulated to you, and I'm not going to go into it in any detail at all, was a full detailed draft terms of reference for this new committee, and I'd encourage you to look through that. I will, though, with three slides, just highlight a couple things. The role, this is a committee that needs a high level of knowledge, because I would argue it may be your most important committee. It's going to determine the, the people who are your leaders, and it's going to help the RA make those decisions. So it is a very important committee with a high level of functioning required. There's a list of detailed responsibilities, and I'm not going to go through them, other than to say we be, the, the committee's suggesting expanding the mandate a bit to helping identify leaders, encourage participation, interact with those members, encourage them to put forward their name to become volunteers and be elected, and that they would try to facilitate that, that process, as well as an open and transparent process to let any and all interested and willing, uh, members become involved and be elected. So a fair, and they would be responsible to develop and maintain an attribute matrix to guide their decisions that would be open, so everybody could see what are the criteria we use or suggest to be used to bring forward these nominations and to identify, uh, and recruit these leaders and promote them. And finally, that the, the membership would be, as suggested, three members elected by and from the RA, two appointed by the board, and the past president was chair, two years, a three-year term. There are other details in the terms of reference. I'm going to stop there, because the next section was your original mandate, which was, look at how we do business in our nominations and election processes, and help to make that better. And so, but before we go to that, I think this would be a good place to stop, because this is the full slate of considerations as far as the overall governance structure. And we might take a few comments or questions or concerns at this point, if you thought that appropriate, Keyshor.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, Dr. Letting has a comment. Can we unmute Dr. Letting, please? Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, uh, just a couple of things. Um, in the sections, I noticed that there were committees, for example, like cardiac surgery, that could well end up with no members, and my thought was, well, if you got a section without a member, they're, they have no voice, so that doesn't make any sense. So I think you have to have at least one member, for sure. Just a comment. Second point is the AGM. Um, I, I'm not, I mean, I've been through every well, many years on, on, on the RA, and when we talk about eliminating the AGM, I'm really trying to figure out what are we gaining and what do we, did we gain by having it, and what are we losing by cutting it out? I, I really don't understand that little meeting we've had. I thought it was part of some sort of corporate, um, regulation that we had to do or have. Uh, it appears like all of a sudden, it's really kind of a, maybe useless process? If we can just eliminate it? Could someone help me a little bit to understand what the implications are?
Thanks, Dr. Letting. Uh, Dr. Shannon has a comment. Can we unmute Dr. Shannon, please? Go ahead, Jen.
Thanks, Keyshor. Um, so I'm just, uh, answering, well, attempting to answer the question or some of the information on why an AGM, and basically, the AGMs go back to originally, um, the SMA did come under the nonprofit legislation, which required an AGM. Uh, but a little bit of history, as of 1999, the SMA actually has its own legislation. We have the Saskatchewan Medical Association Act. So we can actually determine our own governance structures. So the AGM was kind of a hangover, and the only power the AGM actually has is, as we said, to make bylaw changes. Instead, the SMA has always preferred to use a democratic parliamentary process. That not being the only way to engage members, we want engagement with all of our members and transparency, and we do that through various different fronts, but the basic governance is the parliamentary system and not the AGM. So the good thing about the RA is everybody's voted in there. You need a quorum, which is 50% of delegates plus one to do the business of the association. The risk with the AGM is, as it stands currently, quorum is whoever shows up. So if there, there is a risk, if something came forward, that a very small number of people could power in something, um, if it had more power, because there is no significant quorum. Uh, even for bylaws, it's a percentage of quorum, the actual quorum is whoever shows up. So there is risk associated with the AGM, the way it currently is, and the parliamentary system is most likely better, but that's up for debate, obviously.
Thanks, Dr. Shannon. Uh, Dr. Pele, can we unmute Dr. Pele, please? Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank, thank you, Dr. Vistal, for allowing to speak again. Um, that's a great question, Dr. Letting, and thank you, Dr. Shannon, for that segue into the discussion. Um, I've had a chat with a few prominent past presidents about this elimination of the AGM. And it's interesting to note that most of, not, not most, in fact, all of those past presidents actually, uh, stated to me that they didn't think this is a good idea. And I'm hoping that there's an opportunity for, for our past presidents to, to, to talk about why they feel that that's not an option to eliminate the AGM. Now, it may, may sound easy to eliminate it, because there's low attendance, it's a quick meeting, it's a, it's a waste of time for an extra day. But we need to look at a few more additive points about the AGM. The AGM offers the general and ordinary members a forum to belong and be engaged. It is also a direct oversight to the RA and the board. And the RA and the board are answerable and accountable to the membership by the AGM. So if we eliminate that, we actually eliminating an element of oversight. However, if we do elect we, to eliminate the AGM, we need to look at how we can reinforce the members' powers, the ordinary members' powers at the RA. Because when ordinary member speaks at the RA, that's all he can do. An ordinary member cannot make a motion at the RA. An ordinary member cannot vote at the RA. All he can do is rant and rave. So if we are going to eliminate the AGM, we need to look at a way of changing the powers of the ordinary member at the RA. So, you know, those are things that I would want to put out there for people to have a discussion when we're thinking about eliminating the AGM. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Pele. Dr. Pervez, can we unmute Dr. Pervez, please? Go ahead.
Thank you, Keyshor. Um, my question is regarding the sections, um, Dr. Sharstein mentioned. Um, and especially, I will be talking about my section, which is pediatric. Um, last 25 years, pediatric section has been dominated by Saskatoon. Only Saskatoon and nothing else than Saskatoon. Um, I tried my best to attend two of the meetings, section meeting of pediatric, and I was the only person. So it seems like Saskatoon, of course, it only, only happens in Saskatoon, in, whenever the RA is in Regina. Somehow, the section meeting never happens in Regina, or the members never show up. And all the selection, election, whatever you want to call it, is happening in Saskatoon, and Saskatoon people take over all the decisions. I have spoken with the Moore's pediatrician, I spoke to the Yorkton pediatrician, I spoke to the Subfrent pediatrician. Somehow, they are not represented at all. They never attend the meetings, it is never virtual, it's always in person. So my point is, the sections, um, and their elections are always, always, always dominated by Saskatoon, and no one else is, um, ever, 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 uh, elected or selected. Thank you.
Dr. Sharstein, maybe you could hold your comment, uh, about Dr. Pervez's question. Dr. Stridham would like to make a comment. Dr. Stridham? Let's unmute Dr. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I, I think I just want to make sure that, you know, the, the power of the organization really lies with the members and their engagement in MSAs, who, the, the members, the executives of the MSAs are actually elected by uh, the members on the ground. And so the same thing happens for the, for the RA. So engagement really needs to be, um, from ground level up to bring the, the issues and to have the trusted, um, you, you know, members, being the leaders under those circumstances. We can, uh, coordinate and, and, and make sure that we, we have, um, um, an idea of what's happening in all parts of the province, and then escalate those things upwards, uh, towards, uh, towards our parliament, which is really oversight for the, for the, for the whole system. So I think, in terms of, uh, accountability, um, I, I think there is still lots of, of, of influence that, um, I think is underutilized at this stage in terms of what need to happen at MSA level and our, our, um, you know, the need to engage more people, to get engaged at that level, to strengthen the rest of the system. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Stridham. Uh, uh, Dr. Sharstein, I'm going to pass back to you. You may want to specifically address Dr. Pervez's question about pediatric representation, Regina versus Saskatoon, but then perhaps we'll go on with the presentation. And, and before we do that, let me just say to everyone on the call, thank you, uh, for your patience and your stamina. We are actually in very good shape with our agenda, so hang in there, we're doing great. Uh, Brian, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Keyshor, and, um, I mean, Dr. Pervez raised, raised one of a number of issues related to sections, and the Special Committee hasn't spent a lot of its effort, there've been a lot with the medical staff associations. Couple of points, so you need 10 or more members in a section to have an RA delegate, so a section with only one member wouldn't be electing an RA delegate. And there may be, there, there probably are questions about the, the, the election processes amongst many of the sections, and could, could democracy be introduced to the sections? I will bring you some comments that the committee has had specifically about the MSAs in that regard. And a chunk of business down the road might be to also try to do something to facilitate the same approach to the sections and their democratic processes, as is being now taken with, uh, MSAs and with the RA. Um, and the other comments will, of course, all be recorded, and the Special Committee, I'm sure they're all listening on this call. And they'll also, we will be revisiting, I'm sure, several of these items on the basis of the input so far. And I would encourage you, um, as boring as it is, when you go home, have a look at this. Drop an order or comment, or even phone me, I'd be more than happy to hear from you saying, I also think you ought to know, whatever, would be very helpful. The next chunk. Oh, is there, somebody has a hand up, I think? Or maybe it disappeared.
I think we'll carry on.
Okay. So the next chunk was really the, as I say, the sense was what prompted, prompted the, uh, RA resolution in the first instance, which was to do whatever we could to enhance the process of nomination. So just again, to refresh your memory, what we're trying to do with, what the committee is trying to do, with its recommendations on this process, improve efficiency, be more effective, enhance transparency, fairness, accountability, and the opportunity for EDI. This is difficult, and in the interest of time, and the fact that we're fairly late on a, on an evening in June, I really don't want to go through this one step at a time, which it requires to fully understand it. So I'm going to go through it kind of in chunks. But really, what you're seeing on the screen is the package you have. And I would encourage you to go through that. It should take you step by step through the process the committee is recommending to try and enhance those principles. First of all, there'd be a period of encouragement. So you'll, the, the idea, the hope is the RA would agree to a reconstituted committee as presented in those terms of reference. On the assumption that that may happen, even if it doesn't, whatever the nominating committee is, the suggestion is it should start with encouragement and promotion. That one of its mandates should be, it should be working around the year, trying to encourage and promote. trying to encourage and promote members to become involved, to seek elected positions, to seek opportunity to be appointed to committees, et cetera. So this would be an ongoing activity for the committee. In addition, though, when it's coming time for RA elections, the first step would be to determine what positions will require elections. So the committee will go through and you'll see in here a whole set of steps on how the committee will review the current membership, as well as is anybody leaving because their term runs out? Is anybody leaving because they don't want to stay on the committee? They would ask incumbents, what is your plan? And so they would first determine where will there be vacancies? The next step would be then to contact those incumbents and to find out more about their intent. Um, and to come up then with a, a summary of those positions where the incumbent is willing to stay, those positions where the incumbent is not, and create a, a comprehensive summary of what positions need to be elected by the RA. The next step, we're calling passive recruitment. And really what this is, is canvassing the entire delegation to the RA. All delegates would be encouraged to consider uh, seeking an elected position, looking for volunteers, part of that recruitment process. This would be in particular, an expectation of the chair to contact the RA delegates. And in a, in a very transparent way, so everyone knows we're doing this, and encourage them to, to put forward themselves for any of the positions. It would then result in somebody interested self-nominating, and there would be a form, they would express an interest. And when they sent it in, there would be expectation of a short CV and some information in a form. The idea here is a standardized form. So when you go to vote for these people, you will be given a package of information with a similar amount of information about all of the candidates, short bio, CV, uh, where they've been, and a few questions answered in a questionnaire. Following that, the committee will now look at the slate, say, we've got these people who volunteered, we've got these spaces, we've got these. They will then be able to, um, determine if they have a, a candidate for every position. And here's where they'll apply this so-called attribute matrix. Because the committee is not only being asked to fill every spot, they're being told, it isn't any warm body will do. We are looking for the best possible leadership, and the RA is saying to the nominating committee, we want your help. We want you to help us find the best possible leaders. And we would like nothing better than there's six people wanting a position, and we can try and find the best candidate. So there'll be an attribute matrix, which will include consideration of the constituency they represent uh, as well as the skills that the individuals might have. Um, the analogy I'd like to use here would be a football team. If your job is to fulfill the roster of a football team, you need to consider all the positions, and you might have twelve incredibly skilled quarterbacks, but we only need one. We also need linemen, and we need receivers, and we need defensive players. And similarly, when you're looking to suggest a slate of candidates for the board, you need to consider, we need, we, we don't want twelve female urologists from Regina. That wouldn't make a very representative board. So where they come from and a whole spectrum of attributes there are important to get a mix. And similarly, do they have the skills? And in that draft matrix, there is some suggested that the committee will consider in more detail, suggested skills that would be important to consider. After the passive process, it's assumed there's going to be gaps. Uh, if passed as prologue, we have difficulty filling positions. There are a lot, not a lot of physicians coming forward, volunteering or nominating themselves for positions. So now there needs to be a period of active recruitment. Uh, the sense I have, and I think the committee shares that, is this process is the one that most potentially could be of some concern in terms of, in quotation marks, maintaining the old boys' club, shoulder tapping only your friends, or whatever. So the idea here is it should be very open, but it should be acknowledged that there is a need to shoulder tap because we don't have enough qualified candidates and interested volunteers to fill all these positions. So the committee will try to identify potential candidates and encourage them to come forward and put their name for. But if they do, they would go through that same attribute matrix in terms of process, and they would also provide that same information. So it would be hopefully very open and transparent. Finally, the committee would be asked to actually put a recommended slate. They're not being asked to tell us, everyone who's willing to serve, they're saying, apply your expertise and bring forward for the RA a slate, as they do now, of a recommended candidate for each position and a recommended number uh, uh, for the positions on the board. Following that, at the RA, the election procedure, again, nominations would be allowed from the floor. You would first be made aware in advance of those who have been, uh, are being put forward of, uh, who the incumbents are, what the current position is. And then any candidate being put forward at the RA would be expected to provide as well a short file and be able to make sure that the members, when they vote later towards the end of the RA, would have that information. So there would be a matter of working out the logistics to make sure that you, you were, that you would be able to do that. And then there would be the vote at the RA. That's the process in a real whirlwind snapshot tour. And again, I would stop there and ask anyone on the committee if they would like to either expand or or have other observations about that proposed process, um, or any questions or comments.
Thanks, Dr. Shersin. Dr. Thorpe has his hand up. Can we unmute Dr. Thorpe, please? Go ahead, please.
Hi there. Thanks, Brian. I, I just have a, a, it's a simple, silly little question, but I think it has a huge impact. Um, I would like to see the name of the committee changed from nominating to selection committee. And the reason why I say that is because the general membership sometimes thinks that the SMA is all about self-appointment. Um, and that we are this, uh, sort of elite, uh, population of physicians who run the SMA and we make all our own selections and we decide on our own committees and all that sort of thing. I think as part of the process, everything you outlined sounds really excellent. Uh, but at the same time, uh, we are selecting someone. And yes, we may be nominating at the RA so that a decision is made. But I think just in terms of semantics, the wording selection committee has a little bit more of a, a palatable taste to it, to the general membership. Um, to get away from that term of nominating committee, I think it also opens up the, um, it might open up interest in self, uh, um, not self-appointment, but, uh, people putting in requests and saying, hey, I'd like to stand for that committee or that position. Um, and then by choosing the name selection, I think that'll make a difference. Just an opinion.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Shersin, it's, it's back to you, please.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments currently, a little, what you just, what we, what, what I just went through is what you would have gotten as a presentation at the RA in May. I do want to go through a few other slides based on the discussion earlier by this, the, uh, membership committee, members committee. Um, and see if you are in agreement. First is unfinished business. So there's some things that were already in the mandate of the special committee you had set up a year ago. The attribute matrix would be one of them that they would like to work on further. And they have observed that the current process by which we elect the nominating committee itself isn't really kosher because the nominating committee puts forward nominations for itself. And they have suggested, we ought to look at something alternative to that, and they have thrown some ideas around, but that's not fully baked. So those are two things that are unfinished. They would continue to work on over the next few months if you agree. They also have a few things, and we go a couple more, Monty, I think, um, that I will call new business. So we are asking the RA if you would consider expanding the mandate of this committee if you have enough faith in them to do this. First, they have observed, and I think in the comments that we've had tonight, we've heard similar. Thank you very much for helping us with our RA election processes. But there's another whole set of very important election processes that maybe could use help, the medical staff associations. Now, that is already a work in progress. Ivan and others have worked with the MSA presidents. And there is a movement already to centralize the election processes, and I'll put in quotation marks, democratize them, very much along the lines of the processes we've just outlined for the RA. But the committee is willing to make further recommendations to help the MSAs with that. So if you thought that was a reasonable expansion, they are willing to make recommendations to also enhance those principles at the MSA election pro, process, which I think, as Dr. Striden points out, may be even more important. Uh, secondly, there are all those bylaw amendments from the spring AGM. And the special meeting of the members says they're quite okay if the special committee takes those on. But this special committee's mandate is, is determined by the RA. You would need to approve that, and we're asking you to consider that. Thirdly, the current and future state of the legend policy committee is an important question. And again, the committee, by virtue of taking on the board mandated, board proposed amendments, one of them was the legend policy committee. The suggestion here is, first of all, some or more of the, some or all of the members of the committee might serve on a future legend policy committee. Uh, but that the, uh, the committee also be asked, the special committee, to make recommendations regarding the future mandate in terms of reference of the legend policy committee. Um, those would be the potential new expanded, um, mandate. So next steps, as was discussed earlier, and I won't talk about it currently here, the need for a comprehensive member engagement strategy over the next year. Special committee would continue to work, report in the fall on its progress and recommendations. And then finally come to the AGM as well as the spring RA with a final report and recommendations for bylaw change. And of course, only to be determined in May of 2023, the whole question of how do we implement the recommendations that the RA and AGM adopt. So the, uh, again, a few comments here in member engagement. Some thoughts, others have been already made tonight, special meetings. I would suggest as an example, those of you more comfortable with the, uh, the RA amendments, the special committee members themselves, as well as the RA delegates, may want to have local meetings. And with, uh, I would say with modern telecommunications and virtual options, some are, some of us could join those meetings as resource as well, and would be pleased to do that to help engage the members. And I think I heard earlier support for some additional small group meetings. But lots of options and a need for an engagement plan. And you've seen earlier the proposed work plan. This is the same one again, on the assumption you approve that. So finally, then we come to, um, the final opportunity for any questions or any comments. I'm showing you this now, just so you will know, the final piece of business would, we, for you to consider these potential resolutions. One, you would extend the term of the special committee for a year. Two, you would expand the mandate to include all of those things we talked about. And you would give the board the authority or recommend they appoint an interim legend policy committee. So those would be coming, but I'd stop now and leave it with you, Kishore, to, um, to determine if you would like to, uh, encourage some questions and answers first. And I would point out, Monty's just noted to me, uh, it's been noted, we don't have a quorum at this time. You can still, and I would suggest should pass resolutions, those would go to the board, and the board has the authority then to act on them absent a quorum.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, before, uh, voting or taking, uh, yeah, before voting, let's, uh, let's take any questions from the attendees. What, does anyone have any comments or questions for Dr. Shersi?
Or the committee members?
Right. Dr. Harris, please go ahead.
Thanks so much. I just had, um, a quick question about the committee mem, or the special committee members. If you could list that again, you know, you said it at the start, but I and I, and then a follow-up is, is that committee set and there's no chance for extras or you know, I, I'm, I'm curious if there'd be other members that'll be joined, that could join the committee as it's expanding its work or, or if it'll be the same as what has already been in place.
Um, I can read the, I'll just read them to you. And, uh, so the current committee, Dr. Hammond was on the previous committee and is off. Um, Dr. Nabuka, Dr. Opondo, Dr. Pele, Dr. Prasad, and Dr. Stonem. Those are the five current members that were elected. And the original mandate, they were to be elected by the RA. If you want to change the membership or add to it, you would need to have a resolution to do that. Because this is currently a resolution of the RA, um, that they're acting under.
Great, thank you. Dr. Sinha?
Hi, I'm sorry, I was just going to also point out that there are opportunities on the interim legislative and policy committee that are going to be coming up as well, and that everyone is going to be invited to, um, express interest for if they're going, if they are interested in that committee, which, um, the people on the special committee will be invited, I think, most likely for the legislative and policy committee. Um, but there will be other opportunities coming up as well. There's also a lot of vacancies still on a lot of different committees of the SMA, and, um, reminding everyone that there's great opportunities there.
Thank you. Dr. Litting?
Yes, I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about having good balanced representation when we make important decisions. I, Brian gave us the names. I respect every person on that committee as being very useful. But I really want to make the point that I don't see a lot of rural representation on there. And my experience in collaboration is if you don't get the opinion to the table, sometimes your discussion's not too comprehensive because you just see what happens in the world you live in. I think the committee's a, a little out of balance for what we are trying to preach tonight, which is balance everywhere. Uh, and so therefore, there would be good reason if we're going to expand the mandate of this committee that you expand, make sure that you have a good balance on that committee. And I don't think you do. I, I think you've got good members, but I don't think you have good balance.
Thanks, Dr. Litting. In order to, uh, give preference to first speakers, let's go next to Dr. Garcia, please.
Hello, uh, Dr. Garcia, urology in Swift Current. I think a little bit further to a couple of the points that have been mentioned. Uh, I think the representation from the rural areas really needs to be at least addressed, even if they're not necessarily included as members. Sure, it's easy to say and easy to say, well, there's vacancies, but uh, just taking that into context, if you're trying to participate in some of these committees, particularly when you're rural, um, if you're thinking of, you know, some of the specialists and people who are in the cities, you know, and how much call, for example, that they do, I'd be surprised if many more of them are doing more than sixty or maybe even eighty days of call a year. Myself, I do over two hundred days of call. So it's very difficult to add that on to additional administrative commitments to try to be that rural voice. At the same time, it's a little bit easier when you have eight, ten or more colleagues who can share these, that, those clinical responsibilities with you. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult thing to try and get the rural port part in, but I think it's, the onus has to be on those members who are part of those committees and in the city to reach out and get those experiences and get those, uh, those contacts from those in the world, because it's different, very difficult to parcel out that time. As just as an example, when we're even looking at the representative assembly, uh, member numbers, when we had that chart up, um, showing again fifteen and fifteen members from each city. when we had that chart up, um, showing again 15 and 15 members from each city, looking briefly at the list of the other sections, uh, at least 10 of those sections, there's no way anybody outside of the city could be those section members. At a minimum, that puts 40 of the members from the cities, which is over 50% of the voting members of the RA, which is again a, a large representation. Um, if we have full, all of the, uh, the section representatives being from the city, which I think is the current situation. Now you have about 75 or so percent of all of the voting members of the RA coming from the city. And I think you can quickly see how many of the rural communities are feeling like their voices are being lost, which regrettably translates into some of those MSAs being poorly attended. Because if their voices are being lost, what's the point? So I think that it kind of has a bit of a trickle down effect. And I think that's where, uh, particularly with these committees, even with the vacancies, that there really needs to be an emphasis on those committees reaching out to the rural members and the rural representatives as well to really get their perspectives on what's happening, what's not happening, as opposed to just running as is. Uh, because it seems like there may be some overrepresentation of urban interests uh, when making some of these recommendations that are, and the rural interests are being, uh, I don't want to say ignored, um, underrepresented in some of these discussions.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Garcia. First time speakers on this round, Dr. Pele?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Vistunathan. Uh, thank you, Dr. Letting and Dr. Garcia for your comments. Um, I think we need to look at this differently. Um, I do believe that my personal representation on the governance committee represents all of our members in the RA and not just urban physicians. I believe that I represent the interests of all our physicians, both rural and urban. And I think I noticed that sense when I sit in the discussions. So I don't think you should feel that the rural physicians are not represented at this discussion or at any of the committees. And I'm hoping my fellow colleagues also express a similar attitude when they're in the committees, that they express the interest of all physicians and not just an urban interest. Um, so I think what we need to do is do a push-pull thing here. As much as we need to have that balance in committees that you ask for, and, and you ask for the committees to reach out to the rural physicians, I think we should look at it the other way as well. Let's have our rural physicians reach out to the members in those committees, to the SMA, to wherever you think you're not represented. And, you know, l- look, look at how we can improve the system. And I, I think there's mechanisms in place for that. And I don't think that the rural physician should be considered left out of any discussion process, any voting process. I think there's a lot of balance in the system. So I would extend my personal hand to any member in the rural commu- community who feels that they've not represented with their discussion, especially at governance level. I'm happy to provide my email, and I'll help you. So, you know, it's a push-pull thing. And I think that do not feel that we do not think about the rural physicians in any of these committees. Thank you.
Dr. Harris, thank you for your patience. Can we unmute Dr. Harris, please?
Thank you. Yeah. Sorry, it was just a quick follow-up to my initial question. Um, and, and along with rural physicians not being on the committee, there aren't any females either. And I would just encourage there'd be more diversity in, in this group that's making such important decisions for us. So it's really just a comment, I guess. And, and understanding it needs to be an RA, um, decision if there is going to be changes to the committee.
Thanks, Dr. Harris, and thank you for being so succinct. Dr. Letting? We'll just unmute you in a moment, Dr. Letting. There you go.
Thank you. Well, there's one thing I've learned over the years of administration in medicine. It's that there's a lot of unique situations that need to be represented. Now, Dr. Pele, if you don't live rural, you do not have the same insights, despite the best of intentions. I, I thought many times I knew what was going on, and, but I'd never been exposed to that, that particular aspect of medicine or, uh, and, and, uh, perhaps also as, uh, James, uh, as Dr. Harris says, the, the particular problems that a female physician may have versus a rural physician. I don't think you, you can try to represent this, but you can't represent what you've never experienced. So, uh, I, I don't agree that you can do my job, and I don't agree that I can send you my concerns about what you discussed at a meeting that I wasn't at. Uh, you need to have balance in that process. And I don't, I repeat, I do not think you have it right now. And that concerns me, great.
Thanks, Dr. Letting. Um, before we go on to the other, uh, people who have their hands up, uh, I apologize, I did not, uh, at the beginning of this session, indicate that we should have any time limits. You've probably seen that, uh, we are running a two-minute clock. That has been the practice at SMA meetings. And because we're getting close to the end of the scheduled time, I'm going to ask the, uh, any upcoming speakers, especially those who have spoken out, uh, previously, um, and really contributed to this meeting, to really try to be succinct. Uh, try to, once your comment is made, let's say your comment is made, and, and let's move on to the next speaker. So I am going to start looking at the two-minute clock. Dr. Parvez, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Thank you again. Um, I respect all the comments made already, especially, uh, our senior, um, Dr. Letting. Um, to the point with the rural representation, I think COVID has taught us a lot. And today we are having an excellent example that all over Saskatchewan, we are sitting and having a two-hour, three-hour meeting with full hour expression going on. So for committees, rural representation, I think this, um, virtual is very important. So ongoing, even if we get rid of COVID, we should continue this virtual meetings and have our rural physicians coming up and express their concern in our, all our RAs, all our section meetings, and all future meetings, so that far, far Saskatchewan side members should not be traveling and have their expression heard very nicely in all the RA meetings and section meetings. That's my point. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Parvez. Dr. Garcia?
Uh, thanks again. Uh, I think a little further, just to, to echo Dr. Letting's point, um, that, you know, we can, we can have this discussion, uh, around the Earl, the urban versus rural. But, you know, I just kind of was, was making the comment that there's a lot of challenges that don't exist in the city that limit rural physicians from being on these committees. And I was informing that, and that, you know, having that turned around, that it is now our onus to, to, to do that, uh, to, to find that time, it's, it's a little bit disconcerting. And I think, you know, what I'm kind of trying to impart is that because of those limitations, there is a bit more of an onus on these committees who have predominantly urban membership to really try to reach out to, to the urban, to the rural communities to really get a sense of what some of our challenges are. Because we just can't carve out that time from our clinical responsibilities to be, uh, representatives ourselves often on these committees.
Thank you. As was mentioned, we do not have quorum. So any decisions or any vote taken does not have any binding effect. However, a poll that we take, vote or poll, however you want to characterize it, certainly, uh, gives the board, uh, information and a feel for the, uh, the desires of the membership. And so we do have some questions for the group. And, uh, I think that is our next item. So we are going to take a poll. Uh, once again, this is non-binding, because we don't have quorum. But we're at least going to get a feel for, uh, the will of the attendees tonight. So the first question, be it resolved that the term of the Special Committee on SMA Governance be extended until May 2023? So let's put the poll up to vote on this resolution. Please vote on this resolution. I'm not seeing any changes, uh, in the votes right now, so we can close that poll. And, uh, this information, of course, we will send to the board. Can I see the next resolution?
Sorry, it's coming.
Resolution number two. Be it resolved that the mandate of the Special Committee on SMA Governance be expanded to include consideration of board-proposed bylaw amendments and MSA election processes. So let's put that to a poll. Can we start the poll, please? Thank you. And again, a strong acceptance of that resolution, and we can pass that along to the board as an indication of the, the will of the RA who are in attendance today. Next resolution, please. Be it resolved that the RA recommends to the board that members of the Special Committee on SMA Governance be appointed to serve as members of an interim legislation and policy committee until May 2023? Can we put up a poll for this question, please? Thank you. We'll send that information to the board. Can I see the next slide, please? Thank you. Can I see, uh, can, can we put everyone's pictures up again? Dr. Sharfstein? I will leave it to you before we close. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Only to thank those of you who've, who've hung in there and stayed to provide your insights and comments. I think they've all been very informative. I would strongly encourage you to continue to do that. Um, I noted on the elections, and we didn't have time to debate each of those where you might have been able to speak to it. But there are several of you who weren't comfortable with those suggested resolutions. And I would be very interested in the reasons for that. Because many of them, for example, that question of the committee itself isn't representative, and could you do something, et cetera? There may be ways we can do that, and the committee would want to and the board. Because at the end of the day, the hope is the membership is as close to 100% comfortable with where we're going and that they're convinced that this will make the association more effective and more efficient, along with enhancing those principles. So anything we can address, the angst you might have about any of the proposals is important. You have the committee member names in your packages. Um, and I'm sure that any of them would be very amenable to interacting with you individually or collectively. I as well would be very open to hearing from you, to chatting with you in a group setting, or doing anything we can to facilitate that exchange over the next, uh, over the next several months. So thank you very much for your participation. And, um, we look forward to further interaction going forward, unless there are any other.
Brian, thank you. Dr. Letting has a, a closing comment. Dr. Letting?
Thank you. I voted against every one of those motions, because I object to the fact, this is the worst, I've never seen an RA where we couldn't have a discussion before we voted. I've never had a motion that was presented where discussion didn't help. And I think this was railroaded. I really, I'm upset with it. I don't like at all what happened here. I, in principle, Brian, I support everything you, you suggested. But when I recognized that we were being, that what, the comments that I brought up of representation were minimized, and we had to vote despite that, I am going to tell you right now.
Dr. Letting, I just want to point out, Dr. Letting, I want to point out that these, this, we did not have a quorum. These were not motions that carry any weight. Therefore, we did not follow the usual parliamentary procedure on this, because they do not carry any weight. This was a straw poll. This, Dr. Letting, this was a straw poll, so that we could give a bit of a flavor to the board in regards to, uh, what the will of the membership was. Dr. Jevry, you have your hand up. You're the president of the SMA. We'll give you the final comment.
Thank you, Kishore. I guess what I meant to say is, this is the very beginning of a very extended process that we want to reach out to everybody and hear voices, whether it is Dr. Letting in Rose Town, uh, whether it is Dr. Pele in Regina, and whether it is, uh, my friend Francisco Garcia down in Swift Current. We want to listen to everybody's voice. Uh, tonight was just the start. And, uh, as was mentioned here by, by Kishore earlier, um, we, we didn't have quorum. Uh, these are not binding resolutions. Uh, you know, it, it's a poll. It's, it's a way to get the, the flavor of the room so as to, so that we can have some understanding from you, but also at least have some vague understanding from us, uh, where this whole process is going. It's going to take us the entire year. That's going to require extended outreach from us to do, and it's five directions. Find out different places. Uh, we didn't want to make this.
John, sorry. Uh, John, I just wanted, I want to check in with everybody. I, I'm having great difficulty hearing you, John. Thank you very much. And with that, uh, let me please say, uh, thank you to everyone for joining in tonight. I feel this is above and beyond the call of duty for all of you. Uh, and of course, you're doing it on behalf of your colleagues, uh, your friends, your fellow physicians, uh, working on these issues, communicating the issues back to them, taking this information back, and then bringing their thoughts back to the RA. So thank you to everyone. Uh, special thanks to the staff at the SMA who always, uh, make this a joy to come and work on. And particular thanks to Brian Sharfstein. Brian, thank you very much for all the work you've done and all the heavy lifting you did tonight. Thank you to everyone for joining in, and we look forward to many more conversations. This is a start. Thank you all. Good night.